Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, August 15, 2023. If you would please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Rayrower. Councilmember Novak.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
One absent Rayrower.
Thank you. Next, why don't we adopt this evening's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Geisler and a second by Novak to adopt the agenda. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the agenda is adopted, which brings us to item one, which is why we have a roomful of people here tonight. We are honored to be appointing a new police chief this evening. Actually, he was appointed to his new position effective August 1st, but he's been in the role for probably four and a half months. And so, we welcome him up here. He's going to be introduced to the community in his new capacity, and will take an oath of office. But he's going to be pinned by somebody. Usually, he would tell us who's going to pin him, but you just come up and surprise us. Bill Steiner.
She was really efficient at that. I wasn't ready yet.
All right. Raise your right hand, please.
I, Bill Steiner, do solemnly swear.
I, Bill Steiner, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And discharge faithfully.
And discharge faithfully.
The duties of a police chief.
The duties of a police chief.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
And the county of Anoka.
County of Anoka.
And state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Now the fun part.
And for the first time in your official capacity here in the council meeting, we welcome you. Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and everybody that showed up tonight. It means a lot to me. A lot of supportive texts, emails, and calls, and showing up tonight means more than you know. It's truly an honor to be trusted to lead my hometown police department. When things like this happen, they make you think a little bit, and so I did just that, I thought. And I tried to remember when I wanted, or knew that I wanted to become a police officer, and I'm not really sure. A lot of people probably in this room say they knew from the time they were a little kid. And I didn't. I don't have cops in my family. The earliest I can remember thinking about it was when the late Dick Marland and his dog Turbo came to our criminal justice class at Coon Rapids High School. And we were pretty much scared of Dick most of the time in school, so to hear him talk and to be kind of normal impressed me. So, after kicking the tires on a couple of related classes in college, I decided that that was the job for me. And I finished up, got my degree, and kind of graduated in a saturated job market. I spent about six months interviewing unsuccessfully for jobs and getting on lists, only not to get my name called, getting a lot of rejection letters. And then, one day, I got two job offers the same day, both from good, quality metropolitan police departments, one of which was the Coon Rapids Police Department. I hadn't made up my mind what job I wanted, but I was called by Captain Hayes at the time on a Friday afternoon to come in and talk, and I knew what it was about. He greeted me in the lobby of the police department here, and a big smile on his face said, "Let me be the first one to call you rookie." And he gave me a big enthusiastic handshake and slapped me on the shoulder and brought me into his office. And within about 10 seconds, he had a badge in my hand and I had a key to my locker. He brought me down to the B shift roll call, which had just let out, and I watched as all the guys were laughing and joking with each other. And suddenly, a call came out, and half of them rushed out. And I remember thinking that this might be a good fit. I got home that night, and my wife asked me how it went, and I said, "I think I took a job at Coon Rapids." And she said, "You think?" And I showed her I had a badge and a key to a locker. And it just, it was just, seemed like a good fit. And it's the best decision I ever made. I never regretted it for a day. The people that have positively impacted my career are too many to thank, but at the risk of leaving some out, I need to hit a couple of the big ones. And first and foremost, Mr. Stemlettle, thanks for trusting me with this. I'll work hard, make sure I don't let you down. I also want to thank some of the many mentors that I've had, in no particular order. Greg Cos, who is no longer with us, but was pretty much the cop that I always wanted to be. Our retired command staff, team who let me have a front row to some really great leadership. Brad Wise, Paul Ireland, John Urquhart, Tom Holly. Learned so much from all you guys. Special thanks to Paul Ireland, who was my first training officer and for some reason took an interest in my career and development. Paul's the person who always gave me the truth, even when the truth was hard to hear. Everyone should be so fortunate to have someone like him. To my family, parents who didn't want me to be a cop, but always supported it anyway. Most of all, to my wife and my kids, Missy, Ellie, Matt, Joe. I'll keep this one simple. It's not easy being married to a cop. It's not easy having a cop dad. I appreciate you guys. To all the staff at the Coon Rapids Police Department, it's been a long last three or four years. And from COVID to high-profile police incidents, the fallout that ensued after, the loss of an officer and friend, staffing shortages, changes in leadership. But this is a very resilient police department. Every time we get knocked down, the rules get changed, new expectations get set, we adapt and meet expectations, we reinvent ourselves, we train harder, we engage the community more, and we build even stronger relationships. Literally, in the last 36 hours, this police department pulled off our first annual golf tournament and raised thousands of dollars that'll go back into the community, all because they wanted to do it, not because they had to. This morning, we went to the Walmart for a Shop With a Cop event and bought about a dozen kids, all the school supplies, backpacks, shoes, and clothing to start the school year off right. Many of these things happen, and you never hear about them. So, to all the members of the Coon Rapids Police Department, I couldn't be prouder to be the chief of this department. I want you to know that this deal will never be a me deal. It's an us deal, and we have great things to do. I thank you all very much for coming tonight. Appreciate it.
Welcome, and we expect great things, Chief. Thanks, everybody, for coming. There's only 11 agenda items, if you want to hang around. Give them a moment to clear the room. Wow, not even Everett's going to stay. Everett's leaving, too.
Thank you, Don.
All right. Don, you got the room to yourself. All right, next on our agenda this evening is the approval of the minutes of the August 2nd, 2023 meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Grisgoviac. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And those minutes are approved. And we have a bunch of items on our consent agenda this evening. Let me get to our first one. We have eight items on our consent agenda this evening, starting with item three. Receive the mid-year gambling expenditure report. Staff has received and reviewed the semi-annual reports for January 1st through June 30th showing gambling expenditures within the city of Coon Rapids and trade area for the seven organizations at 15 locations. The combined net profit this period was reported at $849,686,098, with expenditures within the trade area, which includes the city of Coon Rapids, reported at $1,058,296, $296.47. The reported combined expenditures specifically within the city of Coon Rapids was $857,693.43, for those keeping track at home. All organizations have achieved the 60% expenditure requirement within the trade area for the first half of the year. So, we are just, we are receiving the gambling expenditure report for the first half of 2023. The second item on our consent agenda is to approve an on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license to the Coon Rapids North Star Lions for a military softball tournament at Sand Creek Park. The appropriate fees have been paid. The background investigation is being completed by the police department, and the certificate of insurance for liquor liability has been ordered. The temporary on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license will be valid from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. from September 8th through September 10th, 2023. Approval of the temporary on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license is contingent upon a successful background investigation and the submittal of a valid certificate of insurance for liquor liability. So, with this action, we will approve a temporary strong beer and wine liquor license for Coon Rapids North Star Lions for use at a military softball tournament to be located at Sand Creek Park, 1,008 North Dale Boulevard, on September 8, 9, and 10, 2023, contingent upon a successful background investigation and submittal of a valid certificate of insurance for liquor liability. Third item on our consent agenda is to accept resolution 23-80, amending the 2023 recycling SCORE grant and accepting additional funds from Anoka County. Anoka County has amended the 2023 SCORE recycling agreement to allocate an additional $64,987 to Coon Rapids. The original agreement for $216,626 will be updated with an amended total of $281,613.80. This modification is the result of a pilot program conducted in 2022 that studied where site users were coming from. Results showed approximately 30% of those using the Coon Rapids Recycling Center were originating from outside the city. SCORE dollars are allocated annually based on city population, and Anoka County agreed to provide additional funding due to the high usage from non-Coon Rapids users. So, we're looking to approve the amended agreement and adopt resolution 23-80, accepting additional grant funds from Anoka County and amending the 2023 SCORE agreement. The fourth item on our consent agenda is to set a public hearing date for miscellaneous assessments, 2023-2. The city council must set a public hearing as required by state statutes, and at that hearing, the city council may refer appellants to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. The Board of Adjustment and Appeals will then give their recommendation. The Board of Adjustment and Appeals is expected to conduct this hearing on October 5th and make a recommendation to the city council at the October 17th council meeting. Staff will incorporate the process in the required mailing to the property owner, and these assessments include services provided to taxpayers, in most cases, code enforcement violations. The terms of repayment are determined by the amount being assessed. The proposed assessments are categorized by the number of years to be assessed and the interest rate recommended. So, we're looking to adopt resolution 23-81, miscellaneous assessment declaring the cost to be assessed, ordering preparation of the proposed assessment roll, and ordering the public hearing for September 5th, 2023, on the proposed assessment roll. Item seven on this evening's agenda is item five on our consent agenda, accept right-of-entry agreement with Value Homes LLC. The April 20th, 2023 planning commission, Value Homes LLC, received a conditional price, I'm sorry, conditional site plan approval for the construction of an eight-unit residential development to be located at 9730 University Avenue Northwest. One of the conditions of the approval was for Value Homes to enter into a right-of-entry agreement with the city, and the right-of-entry agreement allows city public works and fire department personnel access to periodically operate valves and hydrants located outside the public right-of-way to verify proper working condition of the private water main system. So, we're looking to accept the attached right-of-entry agreement with the property owner, Value Homes LLC, for a proposed eight-unit residential development to be located at 9730 University Avenue Northwest, PIN number 25-31-24-14-0005. Item eight, which is the sixth of eight items on our agenda this evening, on our consent agenda, is to authorize final payment to Douglas Kerr Underground LLC for Project 22-2 Street Reconstruction. We're looking to approve a change order and final payment to Douglas Kerr Underground LLC in the amount of $45,152.85 for Project 22-2 Street Reconstruction. Item nine, which is the seventh item on our consent agenda, authorize final payment to Douglas Kerr Underground LLC for Project 22-1 Street Reconstruction. We're looking to approve a change order and final payment to Douglas Kerr Underground LLC in the amount of $50,797.93 for Project 22-1 Street Reconstruction. And then, item number 10, which is our eighth and final item on our consent agenda, is to authorize final payment to Aslixens Services Incorporated for Project 22-4 Miscellaneous City Parking Lot and Trail Reconstruction. And the change order was for additional replacement of curbs and median concrete within the rear City Hall parking lot area. So, we're looking to approve change orders and final payment to Aslixens Services Incorporated in the amount of $36,827.12 for Project 22-4 Miscellaneous City Parking Lot and Trail Reconstruction.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Grisgoviac. Is there questions or anything you would like more information about?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
I would just like to make a comment about consent agenda item number five. That's number three on the consent agenda, and that's the amending the SCORE grant, accepting additional funds from the county of Anoka. I just wanted to point out that, you know, we've talked about this in the past, a couple times in work session. I know I brought it up last fall when we accepted the original grant, and at that time, Tim Hammer told me that he was actually proactive in front of that comment at that meeting, that he was working with the county of Anoka to see, you know, how much use outside of Coon Rapids. You know, that little bit of proactive work by our public works director is getting an additional $65,000 added to the SCORE grant to operate the recycling center. So, I just wanted to say thank you for that type of work and that extra effort. Tim, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, though, and I'll pass it along.
Yeah, I should recognize Colleen Sinclair, of course.
Well, I mean, it's such a, that recycling center is amazing, and everybody talks about how nice it is. And you know they're coming from all over, and now we know, or we thought they did, and now we know. At least 30% of the people coming in are coming in from outside of Coon Rapids.
So, these grants, you know, they come. You know, we're going to get them again, and, you know, we'll see that extra amount coming from the county probably every time they do these. And you're right, that recycling center is popular. If I go there in the morning before they're open, there's usually a line to get in there. People are waiting to get in there, so glad we can do this.
I especially like when it's recycling and shredding day. I usually leave my morning men's meeting about 8:30, and I look down 111th, and the cars are already lined up all the way down 111th for waiting for shredding. All right. So, we have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Is there any other discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the consent agenda is approved and adopted. We have one item under bid openings and contract awards, and that's item 11, and we'll first need to remove that from the table.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll make a motion to remove this item from the table.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Grisgoviac, to remove the construction contract for City Hall fencing from the table. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And that motion passed, and that is off of the table. So, we were going to consider construction contract for City Hall fencing, Project 23-61. Mr. Hammer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. This is a continuation of our meeting two weeks ago. Council had requested some additional information, making sure that we were really thinking hard about what it is we were about to install. So, we went back, asked a few more questions, made sure our bids were still going to be good, looked at an alternative which added $16,600 to the contract. It was just a smaller mesh fencing along most of the perimeter of the site. Myself, Police Chief Steiner, and others have reviewed it, believe that's a really good upgrade. And so, we're recommending to you award of contract to century fence in the amount of $142,200. And I'm happy to stand for any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hammer? Councilmember Geisler?
Yeah. Last meeting, we had a few questions, and so, you know, to me, it was best to put it on the table. Let's, you know, get all the answers and come back so we could make sure we were getting the right thing in the right way. We talked a little bit about it at the work session before this, and I think everybody fully understands what we're doing, what we've got. It meets all of our needs. And so, with that, I would make a motion to approve the contract with century fence for the amended one-inch mesh fencing in the amount of $142,200, and authorize staff to execute the agreement.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Novak. Discussion? I thank you for all the extra work on this and for coming back with the slightly revised plan. All I could think about was how fast, as a kid, you could go over that chain-link fence with the two-inch diamonds.
Climb right over it.
Yeah, so that, going to this narrower is, I think it's just more secure. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries, and you can start getting that fence put in. Item 12, we have a lot of notes on that. Item 12, consider resolutions ordering preparation of feasibility report and plans for Project 24-1 Street Reconstruction. And it looks like, looks like, Mr. Hammer, all of these are down kind of in that Woodcrest neighborhood, 99th to 101st, Kumquat, Larch, Magnolia, Norway, Olive, Palm, Quince, and then the cross streets, 100th, 101st, 102nd, and then skip over Highway 10 behind the post office to Golden Rod from 102nd Avenue to 102nd Lane. And then, we're going to make one little jump down to East River Road, 90th Avenue from East River Road to Norway, and Norway from the dead end to the cul-de-sac. Mr. Hammer, anything you want to add to that?
Mr. Mayor, just to be brief, it's about three miles in total. It's a smaller project. We've got some bigger ones coming on the horizon. The Woodcrest area will include water main replacement. It's got some old cast iron pipe in there with some break history, so that will be occurring, as will a new sidewalk segment along the north side of 99th Avenue from Coon Rapids extension all the way over to Woodcrest Drive. So, just connecting some of those trails and sidewalks in the area. This is our first step. You know, we've talked about it briefly in work session, setting this schedule. This is really where we get down into the nuts and bolts of what's it going to cost, what are the funding sources going to be, how it's going to be paid for. It also starts off the neighborhood meetings and conversations and getting people to come in and understand construction and provide some questions, concerns for us. So, it's a step for us in the right direction. These roads are 30, 35-plus years old. So, with that, I'll answer questions, and Mr. Hanson will be here next time with a nice PowerPoint for you, answering questions.
All right. Questions for Mr. Hammer? So, 99th Avenue currently doesn't have a sidewalk, and are we proposing a standard sidewalk on that, then?
Yeah, I believe there's a sidewalk on the south side of the road. We would be adding one on the north side, and we've upped our standard to six feet wide because our sidewalk machines are, you know, four foot, eight inches, and it's always really tight on both sides of that sidewalk. So, we've upped them to six feet.
All right. Pretty good. Any other questions for Mr. Hammer? Okay, this is not an introduction, so we actually need a vote on this one.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
Make a motion to adopt the following resolutions necessary for Project 24-1 as part of the 2024 Street Reconstruction Program. A, adopt resolution number 24-3/3, ordering preparation of feasibility report, and B, adopt resolution number 24-1/6, ordering preparation of plans.
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Geisler. And that, A was adopt resolution number 24-1, sub 3, right?
Yes.
Did I mix that up?
A little bit.
I mixed a little bit.
You were really close.
Can we say it again?
Clarify it, though.
Just clarifying that motion.
Appreciate that. That's exactly what I said.
And the second approves the clarification.
All right. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 13. Is everyone, yep. Item 13 is to adopt resolution 23-82, accepting a DWI grant from the state of Minnesota. Chief Steiner, it looks like we've been doing this for a little while now, and we're going to keep going, huh?
You're correct. We've been, I think it's been since 2015 or so, with one year that we didn't. I think that was 2019. So, it's really a continuation of what we've been doing. It's a very successful program. We have, it frees up a lot of patrol time, and it really makes an impact on the road for the safety of the citizens of Coon Rapids. So, we definitely recommend continuing it. The grant is for $147,183.60 to cover the salary and benefits of the DWI officer, and this would require us to keep our authorized strength at 71, which, again, is what we've been doing for a while.
Excellent. Anybody have any questions of Chief Steiner?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll make a motion approving resolution 23-82, authorizing the 2023-2024 agreement with the Minnesota Office of Traffic Safety, accepting a grant to fund a full-time officer through September 30th, 2024.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Carlson. Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 14, this is an introduction, to an introduction of an ordinance to regulate the use of cannabis in public by adding chapter 7-800. Mr. Brody, you want to hit the highlights?
I can. Mayor, council members, as we're all aware.
Mayor, council members, as we're all aware, adult-use cannabis has been legalized this year by the legislature, and so they're developing processes to, for the sale of that and items related to that, as well as a decriminalization of the use of it. One area that they have left to local control is how we regulate its use in public. So we've discussed this as a staff, we've discussed this with the council about that approach. It's, this ordinance is in response to that, and we're, I guess for the lack of a better word or the easiest way to describe it, we're going to treat, treat it similarly to how we treat alcohol in public, in that we're not going to allow it in most places. There are some exceptions that are required by statute, those statutes, those exceptions make sense. You can use it in the privacy of your own home, and a few other places. So that's what the ordinance essentially does, is it prohibits it in the use of public, but allows it in those specific exceptions that are provided by statute in our ordinance. We are limited to the penalty being a petty misdemeanor, so that's been incorporated. There is one question, and I'll bring it up, because Councilmember Ray Wauer brought it up about the, can't just grab my notes here, so I can keep all the different items. Hemp-derived consumer product, nobody's really 100% certain exactly what that is. It's listed throughout the ordinance, or throughout the statute that kids can't use it, anybody under 21 can't use it, there's, you know, we have to develop educational programs that, about it, but nobody's 100% certain exactly what it is. I've been in contact with the Department of Health, the League of Minnesota Cities, but I'm going to try to get that clarified so that we know what we're, what we're talking about by our next meeting. But I thought we should still introduce it as is. For some reason, if hemp-derived consumer products should come out, we'll take it out. That won't be a major change. If it should stay in, then it'll stay in, and we've got it in there already. But I know Councilmember Ray Rauer had asked about that, and I don't have a great answer for it yet, but we will before it's adopted.
I think it'll be really hard to discern which is which.
Yeah, and that's part of it.
That's why I think it's important probably to leave it in.
And so, and we've had conversations, obviously, with our police department, the other attorneys in my office, and we're pretty comfortable with this. You know, we're, it's a new area, but like everybody else, we're learning, and we're going to figure it out. And I think it makes it simpler in this respect that it's, it's in the pub, it's everywhere, and it's not allowed in the public, similar to alcohol, so I think people understand that.
And, Mr. Brody, you haven't made me look up a word for a while. I had to look up curtilage.
Yeah, that's my favorite.
Because that's one of the exceptions. One of the exceptions is a private residence, including the person's curtilage or yard.
Yeah.
And I thought I could kind of tell, but I'm going to look it up, and it's the area of land occupied by a dwelling and its yard and outbuildings actually enclosed or considered as enclosed.
It's well-known in the law enforcement, in the Fourth Amendment, so our police department won't have any problem with.
Yeah. Okay. Very good. Does anybody have any questions on this?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Novak?
Mr. Brody, I know that Anoka County has recently put in place laws that are very similar to what we're looking at. Have they put in, into account any of these definitions that we're looking for?
They have. They prohibit hemp-derived consumer products as well. I have not reached out to them, though, and I may do that to see if they've got a better understanding of that as well. But they do have that in their ordinance.
Okay.
That they prohibit that, along with the laundry list of other things that we're allowed to prohibit in, in public under the statute.
Does, ours is very similar to theirs, isn't it? Because we're really kind of looking for the same enforcement, aren't we?
It is. Theirs is limited, obviously, to sort of, I believe, county-controlled property, which is a little bit less than what we have.
Okay, I see.
So, but they're similar in nature that they prohibit all the products that we prohibit or the type of products.
Okay. Very good. All right. Any other questions on this? Okay, well, then, then we will consider ordinance adding Chapter 7-800 as it relates to the use of cannabis in public, introduced. And if anybody has any concerns about this, reach out to staff or your council or mayor before our next meeting. And we're up to our, zip right up here. Open mic public comment. Is anybody here to address council for open mic this evening? No? All right. Very good. Then we have one, two, three, four, open mic responses. The first one was Mr. Mike Kimball of 121st Circle, spoke at open mic to outline his concerns related to a new trail segment along Coon Creek. City staff has exchanged communications with Mr. Kimball on this topic several times over the past few years, and while this may not speak specifically to all of his questions and concerns, staff offers the following response. Coon Creek Trail is a regional trail within the city and Anoka County, and expansion and/or completion of the corridor has always been a priority. Gaps and proposed segments have been identified and listed in several city planning documents. This particular section adjacent to his property was identified in the 2012 Parks Master Plan as a priority project in the 2013 Park Bond Referendum and the 2030 and 2040 City Comprehensive Plans, all generally along the same alignment adjacent to his property as is currently being planned for construction. The trail segment has long been viewed as offering high recreational value and natural amenities that don't exist in many places within the community. The city is now in possession of all land and easements needed to complete the project as shown in the attached document. And I will add a sidebar here that, and we did not buy a house up there for $500,000.
Correct.
As was alleged in his comments that night. We just bought a piece of easement across there for the trail. And, let's see, so the city is now in possession of all land and easements needed to complete the project, and staff continues to gather supplemental survey and geotechnical data to assist in determining the ultimate final alignment for preparation of a construction documents and finalizing required permitting. It will include a boardwalk section over some open water, with the majority being a two-minute's trail. The proposed location is along a wetland complex and floodplain of Coon Creek, which does offer design challenges that will increase the cost of construction and will likely be seasonally inundated with high water. However, staff believes that the trail can be constructed within budget and will be built for safe and effective use for many years to come. And I would say and council, because council has backed this every time we've talked about this. Additional details will be shared with the city council and residents in the adjacent neighborhood when final plans have been completed, and the topic will also be on future council agendas in the coming months to consider approval of plans, seek authorization to bid, and potentially awarding a construction contract. Item 16 was Ms. Carla McNally appeared at open mic to outline concerns related to excessive access points at Lyons Coon Creek Park and the deteriorated roadway condition of 129th Lane between Round Lake Boulevard and Silverrod Street. The first addressing the park access, parks are typically designed with multiple access points to allow for multimodal access to best serve the surrounding neighborhood and the larger community. Lyons Park specifically was designated as a cornerstone park in our Parks Master Plan, and subsequent Park Bond Referendum improvements in 2019 included a destination play structure, restrooms, and picnic areas. Adding fencing to restrict access to a single point would create logistical, maintenance, and safety concerns, and seem to be counter to what we're doing with our parks there. In regard to the segment of 129th Lane referred to, this is a private road maintained by the adjacent property owners through a cross-access easement agreement. The city has received many complaints about the condition of this road, including from probably everybody on council, over the past three to four years. Public work staff have communicated with the property owner and manager responsible for organizing the roadway maintenance under the agreement on several occasions over the years, but this has only resulted in short-term repairs. The continually deteriorating roadway condition is now resulting in stormwater concerns with grit and debris entering the city's system. Staff recently outlined such concerns and put the owner on notice that absent a more substantial, long-term solution, and we're talking about 129th Lane between Round Lake Boulevard and whatever that street is it cuts across.
Silverrod.
Silverrod. It runs between Cane's and Wendy's there, and a couple other businesses. It is a private street, the city is not, it's not our street to maintain. But staff has recently outlined such concerns and put the owner on notice that absent a more substantial, long-term solution, the city would take all appropriate actions feasible to resolve the issues, including closing public access. That seems like that would get their attention.
Yeah.
Again, this item is for informational purposes, and no further actions recommended at this time. Item 17 is an open mic response for the goose management plan. Several meeting attendees spoke at open mic regarding the city's goose management plan and practices. And while staff is sensitive to concerns around goose management, it is necessary to maintain water quality, mitigate goose damage to property, and prevent unsanitary conditions or droppings for members of the public using the city's parks and recreation spaces. The city's goose management plan, which provides additional information on this matter, can be found on the city website, and the plan does allow for other options to address geese other than removal from the various sites within the city. And as outlined in the city's goose management plan that is approved by the Department of Natural Resources, park and recreation spaces typically experience excessive goose excrement in many areas, including parking lots and picnic areas, along trails, on the athletic fields, and around the concession and bathroom areas, and the geese often feed on and cause damage to the fairways and greens at Bunker Hills Golf Club. Geese create similar concerns on the athletic fields, baseball, football, soccer, et cetera, typically at the most critical time of establishment and high usage during the athletic seasons. These deposits are a nuisance and elicit numerous complaints from park users. Therefore, some level of goose management is needed each season to mitigate these concerns, and I do encourage everyone to go to the website if you're interested in this and read the goose management plan. The last one is item 18, an open mic response to Mr. John Leggett. He addressed city council to ask for more help of restroom cleaning during large tournaments at Sand Creek Park. He is with the North Star Lions Club that operates the concession stand at Sand Creek. City staff have adjusted staffing in recent years in an attempt to better service Sand Creek Park during large events. The city recognizes the importance of these events to the community and always seeks to ensure the users of our facilities have a positive experience. Despite staff having an additional staff person on to assist Saturday and Sunday at the tournament held July 27th to 30th, in addition to the part-time night and weekend staff member, it was not enough help to keep up with the volume of restaurant usage at this tournament. For future tournaments, staff will require both full-time and part-time help to cover more time in the day to keep up with tournament volume. This will apply to three more tournaments coming up in September. After that, staff will evaluate with Mr. Leggett and the Lions Club to see if the additional staff time was helpful and/or analyze alternative options and evaluate a plan for the 2024 tournament season. The city is very appreciative of the significant effort and assistance the North Star Lions Club provides for events at Sand Creek Park, and is eager to address these issues to create a better user experience. Despite having an additional staff person on to assist Saturday and Sunday, we might have to chip them so we know where they're at, because they clearly weren't in those restrooms over the weekend.
Mr. Mayor, council, they were there early and late. We were also having pretty heavy volume at Crooked Lake Beach, and so there was a lot of time spent there, and by the time they made it back to Sand Creek, the bathroom had kind of gotten out of control. So there just needs to be more regular and consistent attendance at that bathroom during these large tournaments, because it gets out of hand pretty quickly.
Okay. Yeah, because it really is, I mean, as Mr. Leggett said, it's, it's a jewel. People love to come here for tournaments, and that really can create a negative, negative feeling. Okay, that's the end of our open mic responses, and we are up to other business.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Novak?
Just in response to a lot of the residents that have reached out to me personally about the splash pad hours, I want to thank Mr. Stemwaddle and...
Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Hammer, you guys are the ones who worked on it. To all of you guys, we're going to be getting that opening at 9 o'clock, I believe?
Mayor and council, yes, the, effective today, the splash pad was reprogrammed for 9:00 a.m., so that will be available for the rest of this season, which is open through Labor Day. We can sort of assess how we want to approach 2024, but so long as it doesn't create some other issues for us, I, I think it's, we can assume at this time that we continue that practice, but we'll fill you in on that as we go.
Well, gentlemen, on behalf of a lot of people, thank you very much.
No, that's, that's excellent. The moms group are going, we, our kids like to take a nap by 11:00, we want to get them in there by 9:00, get them out of there, and get them down, and so, that's very nice. Thank you. We should mention the passing of former Mayor Lonnie McCauley.
Yes.
Lonnie was very involved in all kinds of things around the city. She was instrumental in getting mediation services started in town. I shouldn't have started, because there's a litany of things that I'm not going to recall. But there will be a celebration of life for her here at the Coon Rapids Civic Center on...
Wednesday, the 30th?
Wednesday, August 30th.
5:00 p.m.
At 5:00 p.m., yes. So, our condolences to the McCauley family and her friends, and we thank her for her life of service. Other business.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I think there's only two quick things that, you know, I always like to look at, what, what's out on the, the city website, making sure that people are aware of the things coming up. Registration closes Tuesday, if that hopefully is not today for getting your kids into the programs. We have our 2023 photo contest going on, so please take your pictures, submit them. Love to see your photos of things around the city. And we do still have the farmer's market that happens on Wednesdays at the ICE Arena. So check that out.
Yeah, I'm anxious to, for the photo contest. I think the rules are pictures of within our parks, wasn't it, or something?
Yep.
So that should be, that should be fun. Mr. Stemwaddle, any other business you want to mention?
Mayor, council, I was going to mention the splash pad. Councilmember Novak already brought that up, so that's all for me tonight.
Okay. Very good.
Mr. Mayor, move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Carlson to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.[1785.66]